Ladies and gentlemen, call this meeting in order and welcome everybody here for our November the sixth, two thousand twenty-five board meeting. Our first order on the agenda today would be the county administrative items.
Yes, sir. The first item we have is a resolution supporting and endorsing the Northern Neck National Heritage Area. The Northern Neck Planning District Commission has asked for this resolution as they are finalizing the Northern Neck National Heritage Area Management Plan, and they are asking all of the localities to endorse this plan.
All right. Did you want to read that resolution, Mr. Tadlock?
Whereas the Northern Neck of Virginia is a place where mutual, natural, cultural, historic, and recreational resources combine to form a cohesive, nationally distinctive landscape arising from patterns of human activity shaped by geography. And whereas the Northern Neck Planning District Commission and the counties of King George, Lancaster, Northumberland, Richmond, and Westmoreland have all supported this designation, and whereas the federal legislators serving the Northern Neck have supported legislation that led to the adoption and approval of the Northern Neck National Heritage Area Study included in the Omnibus Public Land Management Act of two thousand nine and the Northern Neck National Heritage Area Act of two thousand twenty-two, Public Law one seventeen dash three-three-nine, which officially designated the Northern Neck National Heritage Area in Virginia, establishing it as a designated component of the national system. And whereas the Northern Neck Planning District Commission, Northern Nectourism Commission serves as the local coordinating entity for the Northern Neck National Heritage Area, and whereas it would be beneficial to the local and regional economy to the protection of natural, cultural, historical, and recreational resources to realize activities associated with this designation. Therefore, be it resolved that the counties of King George, Lancaster, Northumberland, Richmond, and Westmoreland confirm the and confirm the support and endorsement of the Northern Neck National Heritage Area and to the implementation of the Northern Neck National Heritage Area Management Plan.
All right, gentlemen, what's your pleasure? All right.
Second.
Got a motion, a second? Got any other discussion? If not, all of them favor say aye.
Aye.
All against, aye?
Next item I have is the supplemental appropriation for U H Y invoice for July twenty-five services in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred three dollars seventy-five cent to eleven oh one dash three thousand two.
All right, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
A little clarification, also?
Yeah, I'd like some clarification, too.
Mr. Tadlock. Is this the invoice that was overlooked?
This was one of them. There were invoices from May, June, and July. And we just received this. The county just received this.
But we haven't, we haven't already approved the funding for this invoice.
Not, not this fiscal year.
Okay.
Correct.
Not this, how about the last fiscal year?
So the last fiscal year, the, the board approved a supplemental appropriation in the amount of forty thousand dollars, but I believe that was for the May-June timeframe.
You get clarification on that?
Clarification on the supplemental appropriation.
What that money was used for?
That, correct. That's what the school was looking into further.
I, I just, I guess my point is I don't want to give money to pay this invoice twice.
The other two invoices, that totaled. So the May invoice was thirteen thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars, and the June invoice was sixteen thousand one eighty-eight seventy-five. So the total on that was twenty-nine thousand seven forty-three seventy-five cents.
Be, not gain more forty thousand.
They already had one.
But they don't, that's what they're looking at, too, to work that money.
There's another point to me, needs to be made, too, and that is that the firm that we hired take care of this to close out that budget is the very one that overlooked the invoice.
Yeah. You're right on that. Yeah, that was the next, that was the next thing we have to talk about.
Have we, have we gotten an opinion from U H Y on this? We heard from them about the fact that they've overlooked it.
I haven't heard anything. Mr. Tadlock, you heard anything?
We have not. Actually, we have not reached out to them directly about, about this. Now, we, we did. The county had the contract from July going forward with services with U H Y.
Yeah. But also, where did that forty thousand go to?
I think that's what Dr. Pico was looking into, to find out where it went. It's what our standard looked like.
So as we get these invoices, what addresses on the invoices does it go to? School address or does it come to the county address?
They, they had been going to the school, and then the last couple had been forwarded. Now, the last one, I believe, since we had changed the contract, came to us.
Well, gentlemen, you want to get clarification from U H Y?
Yes.
All right. Let's just table this till we get some clarification from them.
All right, the, the next one is also a U H Y invoice. That's for the October services. Eight thousand two hundred and forty dollars. You wish to wait on that one, too, or?
This, that's one that we have not paid. That, that was just, that was just presented, wasn't it?
That's correct.
Last month's.
Yeah, that was for October. And that would come under this year. All right. What's your else's pleasure on that? Oh, oh, what do you want to do? You want to wait till U H Y gets here?
Well, the one for last month, we owe.
I know we do. It's October.
Right.
And that's eight thousand two hundred and forty dollars. And I do want clarification on that other one.
Most definitely. We don't need to pay, pay for something twice.
No. We can go ahead and authorize payment on this one. Get this one out of the way. You want to proceed with paying this? All right, so a motion to, motion to pay U H Y eight thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Do I have second? Got a motion, second? Any other discussion? If not, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the next item that we have is the fiscal year twenty-seven budget discussion. Dr. Pika had provided the board some information. It was a memo that she drafted along with the budget timeline and the Excel spreadsheet that the departments would need to complete. We went back and we did fill that information in for the board's information, so you would see exactly what it would look like. That information was sent out to the board. I didn't know how the board wished to proceed on that. Never if you had any further questions.
It's getting to the time where that needs to go, correct?
It's past time. Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm good with it. It'll only be the rest of the board.
Page your motion.
Yes, sir.
And, and just for clarification, this is, you want this member to go out on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to be sent out, correct?
All right, look, any other discussion on this?
Not on this, but I've got a couple of things as far as the budget goes.
What are we dealing with budget now?
Okay.
We've got a motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah.
All right. All right, I got a motion, second on the floor. All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
See, I got two things on the budget, and it's just my opinion on this, but I would like to see the capital improvement funds split off from the contingency funds and have its separate line item. So, yes, we got capital improvement money, but I don't feel that we should have that money in with the contingency fund. If that makes sense, because every time we go in to take money for C I P, we're lowering the contingency fund, and the, and the point is we're not trying to do that. And to me, it would be less confusing if we could separate that.
What's the I P funds in the contingency fund?
Um, I can get that number for you. Are, are you asking for a separate bank account for that, or just from an accounting standpoint, you're?
I guess, what would be the best way to handle that, so when we spend the C I P down, that it's, it's not coming out of the contingency fund? So it, I guess, it won't have any impact on the contingency fund at all. Would that be a separate account, or would it be a separate line item?
Yeah, it, it's a separate line item in the budget now. We can check into that and get back with the board to see how best to handle that specific account.
Okay.
Get with the auditors.
And while we're doing that, let's look at grants. That's another ticket item that, as we approve grants, that money is coming into the contingency fund. I would like to see X number of dollars put in to help cover grants, and as we approve those grants, again, it's not reducing the contingency fund. It's money that we have set aside for that purpose. And once that's gone, it's gone for the year.
I'd like to know how much, how much money come out of that fund to start with? Do something like, we're just making up, and would that affect us negatively by lowering the contingency fund at that time?
Yeah, the pros and cons of doing that, yes.
We, we can certainly get some more information for the board and, and try to have that for you. Reason I'd say, let me get back to you on the amount, because we have taken some out for the school division within the C I P, so I want to get you a more accurate figure.
I guess what I'm looking at is about a tracking system for the funds. I mean, the money seemed to, can, can go pretty quickly out of the contingency fund. And I'm just looking for better ways of, of not having so much drawn out of it. That's all I got.
All right. Well, get some more information on to it. I don't know if putting it in a separate account's the way to go.
Might not be.
I just don't know, but you need to keep it separated from everything else. Luttrell and Merritt can do some checking on that, see what the easiest way to set it up.
And we can get with the treasurer and the auditors.
All right. All right. Any other comment on that? All right. Tadlock, you have anything else?
That's all I had for this evening.
All right. We got a few minutes. Anything else the board needs to discuss right now?
Blochburg dump, while we got time. You and I had a conversation about that a couple of weeks ago, and they were supposed to come and do some cleaning and some pressure washing. And I'm gonna tell you, they, they haven't done anything.
They haven't come in.
I, I haven't seen any difference in it. I'm still getting complaints. And I know the last time we went through this, I made a request for them to come here. I'm putting that same request in. They need to come here. I don't want them online, dialing in. I want somebody in person.
All right, I'll reach out to Vince James.
Because if the citizen's gonna be inconvenienced every time they go there and they're stepping in all kinds of stuff, it's running out of those dumpsters. And then maybe they need to be inconvenienced a little bit to make a trip to Northumberland County to hear what we got to say, but.
All right. No, I'll, I'll get in touch with Vince James.
Also, we're on that the dump, county dump at Ditchley Road. I want to thank Luttrell and his people. Forty years ago, we started working on putting some lights. I got complaints about. Basically, people were coming from Kilmarnock after dark, getting off at five o'clock and coming to the dump. And over where they, on the left side, on the left side, where they put in other things, cans and glass and all that stuff. It was dark, and they were concerned with the darkness and working there in the darkness. And working with Luttrell and his people, we put up two solar powered lights, and they got them installed last week, and they looked grand. I want to thank Luttrell and his people for taking care of that. And I've already got a couple of phone calls from people who've called and said they certainly glad to see the place lit up a little bit. These lights come on at dark and stay on till about seven-thirty at night, and then they cut off. And they'll only be used during the winter hours when it's dark there. Daylight savings time in the summer. It's light there till eight o'clock by sunlight, so we don't need them. But, big improvement. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. That was Mr. Albright.
Yes.
Curtis Albright that worked on that, so. I'll certainly pass that on to him.
Please do, please do.
Long and good job on the boo bash, and to all of those that helped put that together and helped work it.
It was a, another success. It was.
Well attended. Thank you. A lot of happy kids. And parents.
All right, anybody else have comments, questions? All right, if we don't have anything else, we might as well take a forty-five minute recess. We'll call this meeting back to order, welcome everybody here, all new guests that have arrived.
All right, school board meeting will now come to order. We have established a quorum. So, Mr. Chairman, we're ready to turn it back to you.
All right. Our first item tonight on the agenda is a presentation from U H Y.
Hi, I'm Jack Regan, R E A G A N, Managing Director with U H Y. We've been working with the county and schools over the last several years, actually, but particularly the last several months, trying to help stabilize some of the financial reporting processes that have been established at the, at the public schools. And I've been asked to present my take on what some of the historic issues are that led to some of the financial reporting issues that the school board faced. Talk about what some of the solutions are that have been established by the, the county and the schools to remediate those, those historic issues. As a reminder, I've been at this in my, as my professional career for thirty-six years now, worked exclusively with the state and local government, served all creatures, great and small, from New York City Public Schools and Washington, D.C. Public Schools down to, you know, a town of Richlands with a seven million dollar general fund budget, and everybody in between, ideally love serving state and local governments is my career choice. So hopefully I bring some, some perspective to, to that. So I'm up on the agenda, kind of already went over. I'll talk about what the current condition assessment is, broke it down into several issues that we identified. I think we're on slide four. And then finally, a, what I believe the corrective action plan is that has been put in place by the existing staff to remediate many of these issues. So what led us to where we are today? There were chronic budget deficits over the last several years. There were limited periodic financial reports that were provided to management. There were limited of financial, periodic financial reports provided to the elected officials. And my, again, my professional opinion is that because of a lack of, of training, there were few employees with skills, knowledge, and experience to use R D A, which is your computer system effectively and efficiently. So that combination led to where we are today. Now drilling down a little bit more into that as we get into R D A. You know, we found that R D A was set up in such a way that schools personnel had some difficulty in being able to do some basic financial accounting processes without significant support from R D A. For instance, we found when we were trying to upload the twenty-six budget, a very basic accounting function for your computer system. That the system was set up in such a way that there was really no way for schools personnel to do that. You had to submit that file to the, to R D A personnel, and they took several days to upload that and get it back. We did, and have provided schools personnel with the adopted twenty-six budget as allotted. So you've got files for the third quarter and for the fourth quarter that, once those third quarter and fourth quarter allotments are approved by the county board, that file is ready to go to be uploaded. But as far as I know, still, we'll have to go through R D A. So that's just one example of sort of a cumbersome process set up by R D A. The underlying logic in R D A is really a, a large database management system. There is not the, sort of the traditional infrastructure of a current enterprise resource planning E R P system. In a database management system, for a transaction to move from one place to another, you have to set a flag. You have to run it. See where that goes, and then you have to do something else, set another flag and run it, and see how that worked, and in order to move the transaction from one place to another to another. That is extraordinarily cumbersome. It depends on the user to be a well-trained user to make sure that every single step gets done along the way. And if one gets missed, a transaction can get put into suspense, and you have no idea why. So modern systems do not have that setting of the flags by users. It's all done in the background, so it makes it much more user-friendly. So that's, I think, a contributing factor to the to the situation that the schools has been in. Further, what we found as we went through to try to figure out how transactions were routed for approval in the system, we asked for basically a listing of all of the people who have access to the system, and what level of access do they have? Do they have read-only? Do they have read and edit? Do they have read, edit, and approve? We looked at what their roles and permissions were. And what we found was that there were a whole lot of people who have a whole lot of access to do a whole lot of stuff. They may not have known that they had access to it, but what I believe it, it, it provides some significant security risks out there by doing that. But what I think the root cause of that was, is as personnel turned over, and there was a gap in a role being fulfilled, somebody had to approve a transaction to keep it moving along. So they changed a user role to grant somebody else access, so the transaction could get processed. And when somebody came in, back in to that role, they didn't take that access away from that person that it had been temporarily granted to. Hope that makes sense. You know, so people had accumulated all this stuff, all this, all this authority, all these permissions to do things. And again, they had no idea that they had it because there wasn't a lot of training done around the system. That led to a lot of very cumbersome financial reporting processes, and finally, the standard reports that could be generated from R D A for, who's my superintendent? Back there, you know, for the superintendent, for other members of management, for your board. Were not readily accessible for folks to be able, there should be a standard reporting package where at the end of a month, you push a button and you get a standard report that, you know, can be used by the superintendent and her management team, or that can be used by, or in, in your oversight. Those sort of reports weren't designed, and worse, certainly were not generated, I believe, on a regular basis for folks. Again, some of that is the way the system was designed. Some of that was the fact that the, the folks at the schools were not trained sufficiently on how to use that, that system. All right, so that's R D A. That sits at the top. Now, let's drill down a little bit into some of the specific processes. Let's start with, with purchase orders. I think the, the, the one that I want to talk about first is probably the second bullet. The purchasing process was for convenience, not necessarily for cost containment. I, I do not think that there was a strong culture of trying to get and plan ahead to get a good or service delivered for the best price, for the best quality. A lot of times, it was a very much a process of, we need to get something so that the program can keep running. Let's go out to Amazon and find it on Amazon and get that, get that good in so I can run the program. There are state contracting vehicles that are available for school systems to use to be able to purchase a lot of items that it takes to run school operations. There are other districts around the state who may have purchased similar items, and you can cooperatively purchase off of their contracts. But there didn't seem to be a lot of, yes, planning ahead for when those purchases occurred, and that led to. yes, planning ahead for when those purchases occurred and that led to a lot of expedited purchasing. I think some of that was also because of the first bullet that I have in there, which is there really wasn't a lot of visibility into what the budget status was. Because of the report, the, what I highlighted earlier about lack of periodic reports coming out on budgetary status. People may not have known how to retrieve what their budget is, but I've got to run the program. So I need this good or service in. Let's get it bought. There was really not a lot of written policies and procedures out there that govern how this whole purchase order process should work. Uh, we've seen that come to light as part of the twenty-six of budget management process. When you went to quarterly allotments, uh, you know, we needed to develop some processes in order to identify. Here are some of the items that I need today that are going to last me a whole year. So I can grab some of that second quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter allotment associated with that. Bring it back into the first quarter so we can get that bill paid. You know, so, uh, blanket purchase orders for, uh, recurring purchases like, uh, power bills and things like that where you know, month in, month out, you're going to be purchasing these items. Let's get a purchase order out there written first of the quarter. Process the invoices around that. I would say that the hierarchy in general, the process in general was flipped. Where I would buy the good or service. And I know I need to get a purchase order in order to pay the invoice. So almost concurrent with paying the invoice, I put a purchase order in the system and that's backwards. I should put the purchase order in the system, get it in there early. And then several days or weeks later, usually weeks later, I will get the invoice that comes in. We also found that those who should be approving purchase orders in their functional areas did not necessarily, um, have an understanding that they were involved in the approval of the purchase orders upfront. They just thought they were approving invoices instead of making claims for the, the purchase authority upfront. Um, it ended up, I believe the culture of the organization was such, I'll be very, uh, flip or candid here. All that icky accounting stuff was finance director responsibility. So it was a whole lot of stuff that was laid at the feet of the finance director when the actual transaction, the actual knowledge about the good or service that was being purchased didn't reside with the finance director, resided with some other member of, of staff that was out there who should be the one that is approving that. So that led to this bottleneck of purchase orders and accounts payables, uh, getting processed. When you get over to the um, invoice payment process on the next slide, you have the invoice receiving being highly decentralized. There was no central point or there was no central notification of an invoice came in for, for payment. There was this scramble. Where is the invoice? How do we get the invoice matched to the purchase order and how do we get it paid? So that really, uh, you know, again, second bullet of mine. Uh, you know, invoices are routinely received without applicable purchase orders already being entered into the system. That is a, a very strong indicator that you know, there isn't that budgetary discipline before the process, before the invoice or before the good or services purchased. Um, another aspect I feel pretty strongly about is at some point there should be a graduated invoice approval process so that, you know, if you have an invoice for twenty-five hundred, it needs to go through this person, this person. If you've got an invoice for twenty-five thousand, it needs to go through this person, this person and this person. And if you have an invoice for fifty thousand, that may end up going all the way up and having to get approved, say by the, by the school board at, at some point before that invoice goes out the door. Uh, but there was no standard routing of the invoices through various levels for, uh, approval. Uh, the other thing that I want to highlight that has, has come to light especially here as the deficits continued to exist and it drained some of the county cash reserves is that the county did not have sufficient visibility into the timing of when these payments were going to be coming in to allow for you to be able to plan the overall county, meaning the county side of the operations and the school side of operations, be able to pr- uh, plan out your cash needs on an entity-wide basis sufficiently. You guys have been surprised by a bunch of these invoices that have come in and having a good, strong cash flows, projections going out three months, six months, nine months, twelve months will help the county in projecting its cash needs over time. And that has to be part of a good treasury management, uh, system. And again, I think the process was highly dependent on the finance director because it's icky accounting stuff. So a lot of, you know, the people just sort of washed their hands and said, this is finance director's responsibility. Accounting and finance is at the tail end of a lot of these processes. There are a lot of people in front of that that are programmatic in nature that bear responsibility in making sure that the backend accounting gets done timely and properly. Payroll. Payroll overall was not bad. And because you had someone who was very knowledgeable, very experienced in getting all of that done, but was being done by up here. And one of the things that, uh, I talk about when we talk about internal control is the bus test. What happens if someone gets hit by a bus? Is that process going to be able to keep moving forward if that person is not there to sustain that process? And by not having formal written policies and procedures about the various pieces of the payroll process, you know, it, it really and vesting that process practically in the activities of one person. That creates a, a whole lot of, of risk uh, that is out there. I will say as well that I know, um, from talking with the, the superintendent, uh, you know, prior budgets as they were being developed, there was probably not as strong a link, uh, from how many FTEs do I actually have to how many FTEs am I actually budgeting for? And having a very rigorous process. I like candidly, starting with the check register on that one, payroll register and figuring out exactly how many people am I paying? And syncing that up to how many FTEs are underlying the budget and figuring out that difference. That's there. Uh, the last thing that I'll say that came out, uh, is there were, uh, no written policies and procedures over the quarterly tax reporting process. Um, uh, you know, something as basic as go to this report, put this number from that report on this, um, this line of the quarterly tax form and that resulted in an error that occurred, um, and an under deposit of the, uh, quarterly tax that was due. Um, so we, we've highlighted that one as well as a, a policy that needs to be improved. I've highlighted, uh, several of these already, but as you can tell, I'm a big fan of written policies and procedures. Uh, because those really guide the activities of staff. So you should have one that says, here's how we develop the annual budget. Here's how the purchase order process works. Here's how the invoice payment process works. Here's how we're going to review to make sure that quarterly tax filings are done, uh, timely. There should be a periodic review of all of the access that is granted to staff to your, your IT systems. That's a least privilege because you want to make sure that they have the, only the amount of access that they should have and that you periodically review that. Um, as well as develop strong written monthly quarter, uh, monthly and annual uh, closing policies and procedures. So that's what we found. So what has happened since then? And what, you know, it had through the, the work of some of the folks in, in the audience behind me to, to my lap. Uh, what, what has been happening is we've gotten a team of new financial personnel that are in. Uh, know that the, um, the new, uh, accounts payable technician has very strong skills, knowledge and experience with RDA that we have already seen has, has manifested itself in much cleaner payment processes. The superintendent and her team has strengthened the purchase order approval process and getting folks on the hook for approving those, uh, in the sit- uh, through the work that we did and tried to get accounts payable done and trying to get purchase orders done. Uh, we left behind what I call desk procedures. It's basically a screenshot of your, you know, get this number from here, put it in the screen like this. Uh, so that folks have a how-to guide on how to interact, uh, with the system with regard to, um, to, uh, some of the key financial processes. I know that there's been at least one round of training on RDA. Uh, I think, and I think there's some more, uh, that has been planned. Uh, I know that the the new, uh, finance director has clamped down on, uh, on spending, uh, you know, driven by the, the superintendent. And, uh, we're trying to make sure that all of the financial records get scanned in. So you've got purchase orders, you've got the invoices that are all scanned in electronically. So when you pull things up for payment, they're very easy, uh, to see and to, to match up. Um, I think the tide is turning. There is still a lot of training, uh, to be done until your, your, your processes have been optimized. Um, this is not a one or two or three month process. It takes time. Um, I think the proof will come in the next several months as the school board, uh, continues to exercise its oversight, get better quality monthly financial reports earlier so that you can exercise your, um, fiduciary responsibility for oversight. Same thing with the, the county in the county board and the way that the county's um, appropriating the money over to the schools. Uh, you know, what I'm hopeful of is over time, the process will be, goes through the superintendent, goes through the school board. Once it's been blessed by the school board, comes over to the county and we get into that rhythm of making sure we respect and appreciate the role that the school board has to play in the, the financial oversight and um, fiduciary responsibility in that regard. And then the, the, the county should have better confidence that the information that it has provided uh, to exercise the oversight, the way that, uh, you have appropriated the money over is, uh, being done. Folks want to do the right thing. They want to right the ship. Um, and it's up to all of us to give them the, the tools and the expertise, uh, to do that. Um, the culture I think has turned and, uh, you know, folks are heading in the, in the right direction. Uh, hopefully my firm has played a small role in, in that, uh, the heavy lift has really been done by, by the staff here at the schools and at the county. And I will entertain any questions y'all may have.
All right. Anyone have any questions?
I do. Um, so you've obviously got a good handle on the volume of work involving, uh, I guess all things finance at Northumberland County Public School System. How many people should have access to the RDA, RDA system to handle that workload?
So I believe that program personnel know what good or service is being delivered and whether it's being delivered right in such a way that an invoice should be paid better than finance person should because we're sitting at the tail end of the process. So you need a certain number of what I'll call quote, non-accounting people to have access to both purchase orders system or getting purchase orders in and approved as well as the invoice system for getting the invoice approved. Because they should be signing off on it before it comes to the finance director or her final blessing or the super and finance director and the superintendent for their final blessing for something to be approved. So it's not a small number. Um, now the level of access that they may need to have can be, or what triggers it, um, you know, is something, but there's probably ten, fifteen, twenty people, that range that need to have access and should be accessing uh, RDA at minimum on a weekly basis.
Um, maybe put-
And, and if I may,
Yep.
The, that access level should be renewed. So there should be a process to where I sit back, print out, here's everybody's that's got access. Here's how much access they have. Should be something saying, do we continue to need to grant them this access? I would like it quarterly. I'm not naive enough to believe that quarterly is, puts a burden on certain personnel. I, I think a year's not often enough, or at least probably too often, maybe six months is probably a, a happy medium that's in there, but it has, that should be done you know, a couple of times during the year, that, that least privileged access review.
Sounds like a lot of the problems that we were having involving RDA wasn't a software issue. It was, uh, the user issue, whether they weren't, uh, trained properly. Is that correct?
Oh, certainly trained properly. I think RDA is a cumbersome system. It is, it is a system that's based on a twenty to twenty-five year old technology that if you've been doing it for a couple of years, you're probably used to it. So it becomes second nature. But you know, it, it is a very cumbersome process to have to go through. I think I counted at one point on uh, a purchase order, just getting a purchase order from its initial entry into the system to finally getting posted to the ledger was somewhere between fifteen and twenty steps where you're interacting with the IT system instead of having one or two steps like most modern systems do. And if you miss one of those steps or if you step, you know, and even sometimes if you step away and log out, you know, weird stuff can, can happen because the system is based on such old technology. Does it work? Absolutely. Does it depend on folks that are extremely knowledgeable and comfortable in going through all ten or fifteen or twenty steps to get that done? Absolutely. So I don't want to say it's purely a training issue. There is some functionality uh, that impacts that.
You answered my next question before I asked it, so. That's all.
Mr. Reagan. Thank you for your presentation. When talking about RDA and these basically maybe twenty people you're talking about, what degree of- in these basically maybe twenty people you're talking about, what degree of access are you talking about? Are you talking about full access or read only or read and edit?
Yes, I think what needs to happen is that a, you know, and the concept of least privilege is the first question is, does someone need access to it? Yes or no? And if the answer is yes, and you grant them that access, what do you do? Do you grant them read only access? So for instance, I'm not gonna pick on the superintendent, but I'm gonna pick on the superintendent. I don't know that I want the superintendent having access to write anything to the system, nor do I want her. Uh, and I'm sure she doesn't want that access either. But she may need the ability to read something in the system. So she gets set up maybe with read only access. Versus somebody else may have read access and edit access. Someone else may have another level of access, but you go through that individual that's been granted the access. And you determine what level of access that person needs. And then we send that to RDA and say, set that person up with this level of access.
And, and what person or persons might determine that?
That will be the program person, you know, making sure that the, the right program person is in the process for getting approval, you know, having to, having approval authority. It will be the finance director. It will be the, you know, IT director as well. I think it is a very collaborative process and it should be done in conjunction with the, the development of the written policies and procedures. And there may be, you know, so for instance, at some point you'll get to a process where um, you know, let's say a director of a department may get approval authority for only transactions over ten thousand dollars. You know, there will be some level of approval, you know, so below that they may not necessarily need to approve it because they've delegated authority to somebody to, to be able to, uh, to do that. I don't think that the, the schools is there right now, certainly on that. But once its fiscal house is in order in the next year or two, you'll be able to look at routing certain transactions to certain people based on size of that transaction. And that would be the level of access if they get to the system.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question. Jack. So we're, we're talking about a, a very uncumbersome system. We're talking about projecting out over a two-year period. Um, using the RDA system and um access to that system, which is based on training. So um, with all that being said, we have a fifty-year-old system. What modern ERP system do you think we would better benefit from in this county?
It's a loaded question.
That's why I'm here.
Yeah. I mean, there are several nationally recognized IT systems that are modern systems. There's a Central Square. There is an OpenGov. There is a couple of different iterations of the Tyler Munis systems that are out there. You aren't going to be lacking for choices. The, the question is going to be when to go about doing that. And what I want to put on folks radar screens is there's there's going to be some changes made to the basic chart of accounts for all governments in the United States. In the twenty-two Defense Appropriations Bill, there was an act called the Financial Data Transparency Act that was passed that is requiring all governments that issue bonds to create standardized, machine readable financial statements that will be uploaded to a centralized database so that the bond investors can go out and get those. And more or less, all the financial statements look the same. So the school district here will look like a school district in Maryland, look like the school district in California and, and others. The largest issuers are going to be required to adopt that in two thousand and twenty-seven. The next largest will need to be adopting that in two thousand and twenty-eight, and then the rest are going to be adopting it in two thousand and twenty-nine. The only reason I bring that up is as you're planning the replacement, if you start today, you might be in a position to replace the IT system at the beginning of two thousand and twenty-eight fiscal year, for instance. But then if you're going to have to do a major rewrite of your chart of accounts in two thousand and twenty-nine, you know, are you going to be more or less paying for that financial turmoil that goes on with major system conversions two times in a small space? So I want, as you're looking for the timeline or what could be a replacement of your system to make sure that you know you've got this FDTA coming out there as well. And that we don't have a headlong rush into trying to replace the system and then pay in an extra fifty thousand, hundred thousand, whatever the number ends up being when we have to adopt this new uh chart of accounts, what I think will be likely in twenty twenty-nine. How much, um, what's the outstanding debt on the county? What's roughly the amount of bonds that are outstanding?
We have, um, actually, we, we're getting ready to take on some more, but we've got the school bond. Um, there are two or three bonds out there.
Right. But I mean, is it less than a hundred million?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay. So I think that's going to be the, the line of demarcation. I think the, the wave one governments, it's over a billion. The wave two governments, it's over a hundred million. So I think it'll be twenty twenty-nine.
Well, let's break this down so it's simple for everybody. So we can keep our RDA system the way it is now. Build up the budget using the RDA system and then putting things in place. And by your own admission, you said that could take a couple of years. It makes sense to me that if we're going to purchase a new system, that we look at that system now and only rebuild the system once.
Right.
Instead of doing it two times over, twofold, and we're once again behind the eight ball. So I guess I get back to my, my question and you did answer what system would be the best. But I think it's important for everybody to know that we need to be efficient in the way we're doing things three, five, seven years down the road. And we need to think about that now instead of looking at the RDA system and saying, you know, this is an encumbersome system. It's antiquated. It's fifty years old. You know, we need to look at a system for the county. So that we are modernized in twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty twenty-eight to twenty, and that's a reasonable timeframe. I mean, we're almost at the end of twenty twenty-five. The requirements definition for an ERP system that is going to need to meet the needs of not only the schools, but the county, those will likely take you know, six to twelve months to develop. And then you have to go through the RFP process and then you have to go through the selection process. And then once you select the vendor, you know, the implementation of something like that at a county this size is is several months. So you're, you're talking twenty-four months from end to end on all this. So yeah, I think your, your timeframe is, is spot on on that. And all I was asking is just for one additional consideration in there, which is this FDTA is going to be occurring for you and you're going to have to adopt it within six to twelve months of what I would consider to be the most aggressive timeline for any system implementation, which would put you squarely at the beginning of, of two thousand and twenty-eight. And that just asking you to make sure as you're going through that process to have someone consider this, this whole FDTA thing. And I, I just want to clarify one thing. I didn't say any of those were the best. I said they were available. I deal with a lot of those vendors because I, I, you know, I'm pretty agnostic when it comes to uh, to IT systems.
So the way I see it right now, currently i- in the county, it, it's gonna be June of next year before we could even get the chart of accounts straight to be able to give that to a vendor, to be able to come up with a system that's for us. So I mean, I just want everybody to like, think realistically about this um and come up with a, we need to have a plan. And we need to agree as a county on that plan. And then we need to have all our ducks in a row and we're not there yet.
Yep.
We're not even close to being there yet, where we can actually articulate what our needs are to a vendor.
Yep, I agree.
Sorry, I didn't mean to get on my.
All right. Any other questions?
I have a question, I have a comment. Agreed, Dave. Do an upgrade. But if we don't set a time to get started, we're not gonna get started.
I agree. And budget it. And budget it.
And I like working off of a timeline. So uh, maybe we need to.
I'd be willing, I'd be more than willing, Jimmy, to put a proposal together for the county uh, that incorporates a timeline. You just gotta give me a couple of weeks so I can talk to the people I need to talk to. That at least will have a starting point if we do that.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I also think that this would be an area where your financial advisor could be very valuable and um, you know, they've got probably numerous governments that have gone through system conversions over the last several years and they could be a decent clearinghouse as well for um, folks that have adopted new systems and what that timeline has uh, has been. Uh, Virginia GFOA, Virginia ASBO would be two other places where you could go to uh, to, to look for that. And I will feed you guys some information on the uh, the Transparency Act, the, as, as I know about it now. Um, you know, just, once again, just as a brief, for instance, there are a group of folks at the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, at the US Treasury and at the SEC, uh, working group of about thirty to forty that are out there developing standard charts of accounts for all the various governmental entities, counties, cities, towns, libraries, convention centers, all that sort of stuff. Uh, goal is to release those in the spring of twenty-six. Uh, there's a drop dead date of around October fifteenth or so of twenty twenty-six for all of the information to be out there so that folks can adopt it in uh, in, the largest can adopt it in twenty-seven. So we'll, we'll, we'll have a lot more information on this in the next uh, six months, but that will be able to filter into your development uh, timeline.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Um, we've had a long ways to go with these finances. We've made a lot of progress. Still a lot of work that needs to be done. And that's up to all of us sitting up here to make sure it gets done, work together. Let's not think about some of the other things that we need to stay focused on too. I like hearing the accomplishments of the kids in the school, like hearing the accomplishments of the teachers. You know, I, I got to go into high school the other morning for, for issue possible propane smell. Walked into high school, the floors were shining, school was clean. Every classroom that I went in was neat, clean. And it was I was something to be proud of. And we don't need to forget that. So as we moving forward with the finances, let's, let's focus and let's have discussions on a lot of the good things that's going on in the school system and not just be worried about finances all the time. Yeah, we need to stay on it and make sure that gets fixed. But we gotta start.
I agree with you totally, Jimmy. And I think that um I think that we have the people in place right now for the finances and it is time to start shifting our focus on student learning and student outcomes. Those are the two things. That, that's why the school board is here. And for the last year, I've done nothing but operate on the financial a- aspect of it. But I can assure you, twenty twenty-six, those are the two things that every single question I have is gonna have those two statements in it. How is this gonna improve student learning? And how's this gonna uh, improve student outcomes? And if we stick to that, that focus, we were gonna go further than we ever thought we could. And I, I agree with you. And I think it takes all of us in this room to be on the same page and do that. And, and I can, I will give you my word. That is, I will do that. Anything comes across my desk, I I don't understand, I'm gonna ask those questions. And in, in the school board meetings, I'm gonna ask of the finance director and anybody else, the superintendent. If you're bringing it forward, know that those questions are gonna be asked.
The uh, if I may, be presumptive um to my, my school board members. When you're asking the finance questions, should be books get closed for the month or the grant reports timely and, and, and in have all the required regulatory filings been done.
I will say that.
And get good answers on, on those and you're happy with the quality of the, and, and I think you should ask for a robust budgeted actual narrative each month, almost like a management's discussion and analysis of here's what the activity was this past month. Here's how it varied from what we expected. And if you can get that sort of quality financial reporting package, um, and again with, yes, we've got all of the, the grant reports in. Yes, we've made all the, the appropriate filings. That will allow you to, again, focus like a laser on those, those student outcomes, but nothing deteriorates. Uh, well, one of the largest contributing factors to a deterioration of operations is deterioration of finance. And now that you've sort of hit that bottom and have started on the way up, it, it's about uh continuing that momentum, continuing that vigorous oversight.
Well, that's already begun because in the October report to the school board, I could actually sit down with just the documents that were presented and figure out where we are. This is the first time, this is the first time I've been able to do that in two years I've been on the board.
It's a beautiful thing.
So we are heading in the right direction. That is happening. And that's why I have a lot of faith in the team that the board supervisors has put together to, to, for the finances, so.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Staff have any questions or comments? Mr. Reagan, thank you for your presentation.
It's been an honor serving the, the county and its citizens.
That you provided to the county.
Loved every minute of it. So it's been, uh, I've learned a tremendous amount and you've got uh, the right people in, in place. Um, you've got two boards that are energized to exercise strong oversight. And I, I think that's a very, very good combination for moving uh, the financial reporting processes forward. Again, appreciate the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you need my email, Jack, um, for the Transparency Act stuff, I'll, I'll give it.
Oh, I, I know, I, I know who I can filter it to. Thank you.
As um this will probably be my last joint meeting uh, with the board of supervisors and it's been some hills and valleys uh, during my tenure. And I'd like to introduce to some and present to others my successor, Dr. Carolyn Parker. Would you please just stand? This is District Three School Board Successor. Uh, welcome uh, ahead of time. And I came on the board to my goal, thank you. My goal was to leave it better than what I found and just as good as what I had. My foundation for education started with this district. I'm a graduate of Northumberland. I did quite a few things since I left and then came back home, include I did quite a few things since I left and then came back home, including working for the National Education Association. I never worked for the NEA, for the VEA, but did work across this nation doing things in education, supported and was consultant to, you know, an executive director who was over four hundred, salaries over four hundred thousand, handled millions of dollars of budget, ran through the regional office. So I did want to put out for everyone because there was a report that did go out saying that doesn't make any difference anymore. But I pledge my support. If there's anything that I can do to help as I exit, I have this month and next month, and my successor will then take over in January. But it has been what it's been, and I hope that what I've done didn't hurt anybody and I've been very proud during my entire tenure of the schools, the students, and what we have accomplished in this district. And I do believe that they are at least getting the foundation that I got, and of that I'm proud. And I look forward to that they're getting even more than what I received when I was a student here. So I just wanted to exercise that point of personal privilege and let this group know my thoughts.
Thank you. All right. We don't have anything else on the agenda for tonight? Any board members or school board members have any comments that they'd like to make before we ask for adjournment?
That's my comment, motion to adjourn.
I, I got one comment. We we didn't thought we framed up that other supplemental appropriation when the regim was here.
Was here.
We can, I can get with Director Finance, Finance Facilitator and with Jack Regan, and we can get that that matter resolved.
All right, got a motion and second, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want the school board to adjourn first and then
Yeah, that'd probably be, thank you, thank you, Ms. Tedler.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn, do I hear second?
Second.
All right, vote.
Aye.
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 All right, thank you all for coming tonight. All right, a motion and second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank everyone for coming.